Hi, everybody. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 6th Newmarket Town Council meeting. And we will start, as always, with the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Madam Chair, I've asked that you sent me to make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public session.
Second.
Any questions?
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Duong.
Aye.
Counsel Kiper.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. And then the first item on our agenda is our public forum. And so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, now would be the opportunity to do that. I don't think so. We have a large group of, I'm assuming you guys are all from civics class? Is that, yeah? So you picked a good night to come because we also have Senator Martha Fuller-Clark, who is here to talk a little bit about what's happened in the last legislative session. And I imagine maybe a little sneak peek of what might be coming down the pike. So right now, I would introduce Senator Martha Fuller-Clark. Great.
I put a few notes on my phone. So I think I'll just start from there and then we'll see. I really, first of all, though, wanted to thank you. I know it's getting to be a very busy time with working on your budget and everything that's going to be coming up in March for taking the time to allow me to come and speak with you this evening and so that you can hear from me as your state senator. I just also wanted to say that I love this community. You know, I think you guys do a great job and I think you have a really, really special community. And I know how hard you've worked with your school system to bring the improved, the physical improvements to your school and how hard Michael has worked to help you. And we regret the fact that we were not able to get you to School Building A, but it wasn't for the lack of effort, you know. And I think you're very lucky, as I was saying to some people coming up the stairs, that you made the decision to keep your high school within your community and that so many of your kids can walk to school and that they have a real sense of belonging at a time when so many of our young people are in crisis. So I'm proud of you and I hope you're proud of what you have created here as elected officials for the community along with your school board. And I didn't know I was going to say that, but I decided I wanted to share that with you. I wanted just to explain to you that over the past year, I have had the opportunity to serve in the majority as Senate President Pro Tem. And being in the majority allows me to bring a slightly different, or a major different message, I would say. And I wanted just to share with you that we, being in the majority, the Senate Democratic Caucus, have had the ability and responsibility to set the policy priorities for the legislature and construct and advance a budget that supports our priorities and helps citizens all over the state. Our policy objectives that we established a year ago were as follows. One, to address the businesses' needs for a skilled workforce by advancing increased opportunities for job training and support. And also, on the other side, to move forward with family-friendly workplace policies. Secondly, to provide greater support and funding for mental health and substance abuse programs and treatment. In particular, we felt it was an urgent need to reduce and eliminate those seeking treatment for substance abuse and mental illness from being held in hospital emergency rooms for days, if not for weeks, at a time because there really were not the facilities where they could be moved and looked after. And we made progress. Thirdly, was to help local communities, particularly with your ever-increasing high property taxes, by markedly increasing the state's investment in our K to 12 schools and sending money back to local communities. And this was a very, very high priority that came out of the House's budget that we continue to support in the Senate. But we also needed to shift some of those dollars so that we could put the monies that were needed into mental health, the opiate crisis, and other types of substance abuse. Fourth, we were able, hopefully, to help you ameliorate your local property taxes by, for the first time in eight years, sending $40 million in revenue sharing back to local communities. This is a start to end the downshifting from the state that occurred during 2008 and going forward. I would like to say that while, right now, and I think here I brought you the latest update of our, well, I'll hand it out to you, it's another, of our revenue figures for how the budget is doing. There's no guarantee that you will see that same amount of dollars coming forward in the future. It really depends on our revenues continuing to do well. And there is concern that they may not, and that they haven't so far, held up as much as we would like to the projected budget. But we really had an extraordinary opportunity and we fought hard to make sure that those dollars could come back to local communities. Fifth, we worked to support and advance renewable energy and energy efficiency initiatives in order to help reduce residential, commercial, and industrial energy costs, as well as to preserve and grow efforts and programs to reduce greenhouse emissions so that we would be in a better position to respond to the growing climate crisis, which is threatening our state, increasing sea level rise and inland flooding. And fortunately, many, many of those initiatives were not supported by the governor and didn't prevail. But we're not giving up. We're sending them back to him and we're going to give him a second chance to be able to pass them. And finally, we were committed to advancing programs and dollars that would address critical needs in our state that have gone unmet, such as for housing, public transportation, infrastructure improvements, and access to affordable childcare. And those continue to be ongoing policy issues and budget needs that we're going to have to work on. But I thought it would be helpful if you could just have that overview of what was really driving the various pieces of legislation that were filed. And in spite of, you know, the impasse with the governor on the budget, I would say that we were remarkably successful in the end. And we achieved that by working with the House and really standing our ground during the budget impasse with the governor on key issues such as funding for education, which he was really not in support of. We also gave way on the going-business taxes, which seemed to us not the appropriate way to be addressing revenue needs in the state because every time we cut the business profits taxes and the business enterprise taxes, they are our principal source of revenue for state programs. And so if we continue to see $100 million cut out of our budget going forward every year, every couple of years, the only way that we can replace those dollars is that if the revenues from the business profits tax and the business enterprise taxes continue to increase, along with the room and meals tax, which is our other major source of money to support the state's needs. And, you know, it's not clear that we're going to continue at this really strong, prosperous economic moment that we're in right now. So there is concern that we're going to see the revenues available to the state shrink over time and we will not be able to restore dollars to local communities, both for education and revenue sharing and other types of programs, if those revenues shrink. So just, that's just sort of the big picture that I wanted to share with you. I think, you know, now we're really doing is looking at the session for next year. And I don't know if you've had a chance to go onto the website and look at the 700 and some bills that have been filed for the upcoming session. There is a wide range of legislation, both coming from the House and the Senate. Sometimes the titles that are listed under the LSRs are not very revealing. So I am more than happy if you want additional information about any particular legislative initiative, to contact me and I will do my very best to get you that language as quickly as possible. I do know from the Democratic Senate Caucus that we are focused on two issues this year of particular importance. One is finding the way to reduce pharmaceutical costs, drug costs, for everyone in the state. And a number of bills have been filed, some that we've seen work in other states, to move forward with that issue, which is really just become untenable. And as I referred to earlier, the other initiative is to continue to push forward for programs and policies that deal with expanding renewable energy and support energy efficiency because that is the best way that we can reduce our high energy costs and also continue to focus in on the threats here in New Hampshire as a result of the climate crisis. So this is sort of a broad report, but I thought, better than getting into the weeds, that this would be a good way to update you. You all received a letter that I sent you earlier that went into more information about specifically some of the things that we had done, particularly around the areas of addressing this emergency room crisis, but other areas as well. And I'm happy to take your questions tonight and then to answer them going forward. And I'd just like to say that it's a pleasure to work with the reps that are here and I hope they'll be given a chance to speak as well and give you sort of a legislative update. And then I look forward to coming back to you sort of halfway through the winter and let you know really what is happening with this myriad of bills that have been filed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions? Can...
No questions?
(laughing)
No concerns?
No.
What would you like me to take back? You know, we can file bills again in the Senate in January, so if there's something that needs to be addressed here locally that I didn't know about, I can do that.
Thank you. Yep.
I just have a quick comment, I guess. As someone who owns a restaurant and does pay the rooms and meals tax every month, it would be nice to see Newmarket be able to get a bigger chunk of that money coming back to us as we are the ones paying for the sidewalks, the parking, the wastewater treatment. And I know other towns like Portsmouth and Hampton have brought this up, but it's a little, it would be nice to see us get a chunk of that money, I think.
Right. And I, you know, hopefully, we might be able to work on that. And as you know, communities like Portsmouth and Hampton and so forth are also struggling with the issue of how the room and meals tax is distributed because they feel that they generate so, such a high percentage of those room and meal taxes and that yet it's distributed on the basis of population.
Yeah.
You know, and so that makes it a lot, a lot tougher. I mean, Portsmouth is a community, they're also in my district. They're a community of 22,000 residents, maybe? That's starting to grow a little bit if you look at all the building that's suddenly going on. But we support, you know, a community of close to 120,000 on a day-to-day basis. So we have exactly the same demands that you have, but even on a larger scale in terms of infrastructure and what needs to be provided in terms of police protection and fire and water and all those things. And it seems like, you know, there are communities that don't have those stresses, don't contribute anything into the room and meals tax, and yet, you know, they get a relative portion of those monies. But in all the initiatives that we have had over the last six years to try to redesign the way the rooms and meal tax are distributed, no community wants to give up the money that it's getting. So that's the barrier. So, you know, but we, I hear what you're saying, you know, and we can keep trying.
Thank you.
I don't see any other buttons, so I'm just going to take this opportunity to first say thank you for being here. We really appreciate these updates that you give every year. I think that it's informative to, for the council, it's certainly for the community to hear what's happening in Concord and to hear how our representatives and Senator is, are representing us. So with that said, I do have just a couple little things that I wanted to mention.
Sure.
One was something that came up yesterday. We have an Energy and Environment Committee here in Newmarket and it's been active for, I guess, about a year and a half, maybe two years now.
And I'd be happy to come and meet with that committee at any time if they would like me to.
That would be wonderful.
Chairing the Energy and Natural Resources Committee in the Senate.
Oh, that would be wonderful. One of the things that came up, so you may be aware of this, is the funds that are being distributed from the Volkswagen settlement.
Yes.
There are some concerns that those funds may be seen as revenue for the state and not be used for the infrastructure for EV charging stations that it's really was intended for. So we wanted, I mentioned that you were going to be here tonight and the Energy and Environment Committee wanted to make sure that I expressed...
We're committed to making sure that those dollars are going for what they were directed to do. And I know that Senator Waters, who chairs the Transportation Committee in the Senate, has been working very hard, particularly with around the issue of providing the dollars that are needed for expanding the charging stations.
Wonderful.
And we'll continue to monitor that and keep those monies directed to where they need to go. They are not folded into the general fund. And that's also true with the settlement dollars from the MBTE. As you know, those dollars are in a special fund and they're being used to help with drinking water issues all around the state.
Great. And then my only other comment, and I, I've said this to a few representatives, some who directly represent Newmarket and some others as well. I saw Senator Feltes recently and expressed this concern to him. I, I think that the framing of this current budget, that these monies are being, you know, gifted to the towns.
The what?
Gifted to the towns, or gifted to the municipalities, or given back to the municipalities, is just, it frustrates me just a little bit. At one point, I was in one forum where a representative said, you know, towns can do with it what they will, they can use it for property tax relief or they can use it for some other projects if that's what they choose to do. And the fact of the matter is, I've sat at this table now for six budget cycles and we have cut and cut and cut and cut because the money just isn't there. I mean, we're really operating at a deficit, I think. You know, we've, we've put off projects and, you know, we, we stretch every dollar that we have. And so I appreciate every dollar that's coming from the state and certainly don't want to come off as being unappreciative of that, but I also think that that's the state's responsibility for the town.
I couldn't agree with you more. And I think that, you know, there were agreements that were made about how monies would be shared between the state and local communities that have not been kept. And we're going to continue to push for that. So it's not like this is a gift from the state. This is something that we have an obligation to return to the local communities. And as much as we can do that within the monies available at the state level, it certainly is the intention of the majority, both in the House and Senate, to do that. And so we may not always be successful, but we're going to continue to push in that direction. We want to stop downshifting as much as you want downshifting to stop. And we understand that with the downshifting that it adds an incredible burden to the local property taxes that really is turning out to be almost unsustainable. One of the things I didn't mention was that as a result of the various education bills that have passed, is there is one that calls for setting up yet again a commission to look at the issue of adequacy in this state. And we have a lawsuit pending against the state because they're not adequately funding local education. And it will be interesting to see what this commission looks at. But, you know, that is a, you know, ever since I've been in the legislature, it has been, since the early 90s, it has been a very, very challenging issue, taken to court in the past. And, no, I, I think that really it's not that the legislature doesn't want to fund local education. It's a question of being able to have the revenues to be able to do that. And we certainly understand, we all experience it, the ever-rising property taxes and recognize that municipalities have no other way to raise money except through a property tax. So there was one time, there was an effort to look at, could we allow local communities to have their own room and meals tax? That didn't go very far, but it might be worth looking at again and a community could decide if it did or did not want to put that in place. But that could be a way to raise additional revenues at the local level. But I think there would need to be a groundswell from communities across the state demanding that and being willing to address some of the pushback.
I was disappointed that the, that the governor vetoed the extra assessment for motor vehicle registrations because that would have been a significant amount of money for Newmarket.
Absolutely. And I believe that bill has been refiled, you know. I was disappointed that he vetoed my bill to increase the amount of money by $10 to support the Land and Community Heritage Program for which every, almost every community in the state has benefited and provides jobs, drives tourism. But there is a mentality, a certain segment of the legislature that are opposed to raising any fees or any new taxes or new dollars. So even though we maybe come up with some creative ideas to add to the state revenues, we aren't able to get them passed.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. And I don't know if you also do this, do a presentation for the school board because I have a gazillion questions I could ask about school funding, but I don't think that it's really pertinent to this body because we don't have any...
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I thought that might be helpful.
Yeah, and I know you're, we're still trying to solve this Medicaid coverage crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the community who want to speak? Representative Cahill?
Good evening. Yeah, I want to echo what the Senator said about the revenue. We have this idea about revenue sharing, which was suspended, you know, suspended and we have the ketchup formula. I don't know if that's Heinz ketchup because it's coming out of the bottle very slow and there's a lot of anticipation. But, you know, we're working on it. And I think it's 431,000 that Newmarket's getting combined for the school and for the town. And again, unfortunately, not the other 50,000 that we would have if we'd passed the bill to allow the increase in the motor vehicle registration. That money would stay in town and not go wandering around anywhere else and being used. So I think all the, all the councillors who are running, all the candidates for council supported that when I mentioned it. And I, I hope members of the community will support it if we ever do pass it. Money well spent right here in town. I'm very pleased that we have, you know, people with the civics class, a whole bunch of them came up to the State House and went on the tour. And that's always good to see. The fourth graders are a bit more fun and we had that recently too, but those are good kids too. And, you know, our daughter, you know, grew up here in Newmarket, went to the school and I think that has a lot to do with, you know, how she feels about herself and who she is today. So it's a good little community we have. Any questions for me? The other thing I, I'm working on having a education funding 101 presentation when we get the new cafeteria so we can bring people in, show it to them and have John Tobin do the presentation explaining how we fund education and what we might do differently. So we hope to see that maybe next month or whenever the new cafeteria is done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Representative Charlotte DiLorenzo. It's great to see everyone and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think that the town council is doing a great job and a town administrator and it's really great to see such a young group of town councillors. I think this is probably the youngest group that I've seen in my 26 years here. But, um, great. And then I wanted to also congratulate you guys on the work that's been done on the school buildings. The buildings look great. I just worry that, you know, we spent this bucket of money on the school improvements and renovation and, you know, that thing isn't static, that as time goes on, we're going to need more improvements or eventually new schools. So the whole funding and revenue thing is a very live issue and... So the whole funding and revenue thing is a very live issue and something that we should also be very concerned about. That's about all I have to say. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have these sheets. Apparently, I didn't bring as many of them as I thought, but this is the latest update on the budget figures in New Hampshire with the end of September 2020. And just to bring you up to speed right now in terms of the projected budget, we are running about $26 million behind, but it may catch up. This is early on in the budgetary process. But we also captured additional monies in the budget over the last two years as a result of some of the tax changes that were made in Washington. We're not going to see that money again. But that was taken into consideration in predicting the revenues for the next two years. But I'll leave these with you, and I'll also leave you my card, so maybe you can just share these or have some extra copies made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So seeing no one else at the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 7:30, not 8:30. So next on the agenda, we have the acceptance of minutes. So I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 16th, 2019.
Second.
Seeing no comments?
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper. Councillor Cast.
abstain.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0 to 1.
And next is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I have is not in my written report, but I need the council to find, sign, not find, the MS 535, which is the financial report of the budget, and that we have to file with the State Department of Revenue Administration. So I'm going to pass that around so you can sign it during the meeting. On my written report this evening, the new culvert over Loverland Creek on Bay Road has been installed, and Bay Road has reopened. I want to thank the Department of Public Works, the Plane Department, and Nature Conservancy for all their efforts with this project. I did include a picture in the report, but it does not show the rut that I left in the new soft dirt when I took that picture and angered the Department Director of Public Works after I did that. We had a pre-bid meeting with contractors on October 3rd for the McAllen Dam project. We had a number of firms interested. We're now going out to bid with the intention to do the project in the spring and summer. We're also working with bond council to issue debt to complete the project. And tonight for a first reading is an amendment to the town's personnel policy as it relates to harassment in the workplace. This used to be known as the sexual harassment policy, but it's harassment in general. Now, I worked with our insurance carrier to review our current policy, and we have updated it. We'll also be holding training for all employees and possibly boards on harassment training in the coming months. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Any questions or comments for the town administrator? Seeing none. I do, I have one comment, and that's that I did read through the new policy, and one of my questions was whether or not that would be available or even mandatory. I mean, that's something we could talk about, because I think that that's something that all members, all boards should have. But I also just wanted to comment that I thought it was very progressive. And I don't know if that originated with you or with our insurance company, but I thought the language was timely and appropriate and progressive. It's a good word.
I knew it was, our old one was old, it was just that. So I knew it needed some significant updates, but of course, as always, I'll check with the people who end up paying the bills if we get sued, and went to the insurance carrier to make sure it was okay.
Well, thank you. Seeing no other comments, we can move on to committee reports. And before we get started with our actual reports, I just wanted to bring up a couple things. So one is, at our last meeting, we approved the Riverfront Advisory Committee, and I didn't know if there was any interest in serving on that committee.
Anyone? Do you need to serve?
And so, just one, one member of the town council. And, but keep in mind that we have a first reading of the Arts Committee, and I also received a letter today from the state for the Coastal Resiliency Committee. So that would be another potential committee that would be available for people. So that's, you know, it's a hefty increase in our commitment level, so I just wanted to mention that. And if somebody had something, a burning desire to be on one of those things.
I have an interest in the Riverfront one, just to put that out there.
And there'll be enlarged members from the community as well on that committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Was it three?
Three.
Three. As well as a Conservation Commission member. So it would be a five-person committee. So seeing no other interest, I would accept a motion. Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Accept a motion to approve Councillor Finch as the town council appointee.
I'll make a motion to approve Councillor Finch as the town council appointee to the Riverfront Advisory Committee.
Second. Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you for being willing to take that on. So any committee reports?
I have a quick update.
Is it not? It's not coming through? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just a quick update from the Conservation Commission. The art exhibit opened up at the Stone Church, the photography exhibit, rather, this past weekend. Big success, pretty positive turnout, and that should be on display until December 2nd, I believe. So if you get a chance to go to the Stone Church, you'll see some photographs from all the conservation lands in the area. So thanks to all the community members who submitted artwork. And I guess the only other update, Conservation meets next week, is that from the Conservation Commission, Sam Kenny was appointed to the Riverfront Advisory Committee. I think I said that right, yeah. So he'll be joining us, and he's got an engineering background, so that should be a great addition to that committee. And that's it.
Councillor Kuiper, did you have?
No.
I thought you said, okay. Maybe I was from before, okay. Councillor Cast.
It's been a number of weeks since the planning, and I wasn't at the last council meeting, so I thought I'd just mention a couple things. One is the, there's a Water Resource Chapter for the master plan update in that subcommittee. That's going to, they're scheduling their first meeting. Actually, I'm on that subcommittee, so that's getting started. We have our joint meeting coming up. At our next meeting, it'll be on the day of our council meeting next, in two weeks, right? That's been scheduled. What else was there? I think those are the two big things. Yep. Sorry, can't remember anything else, spent too long, so.
Thank you. Seeing no other buttons, I will mention that the Energy and Environment Committee met last night. And besides talking about the Volkswagen settlement, we also had a presentation from 603 Solar. And they're the company currently doing the installation at the DPW building on Young's Lane. And they also did a program in Canterbury called Solarize Canterbury. And it was really an incentive program for people to install solar panels in their homes. And so they talked about the program that they did there and how something like that could potentially work in Newmarket. And the process that they went through in order to get that business. So it was a whole RFP process. We've also had Revision Energy come in the past, and so it was a really great opportunity for us to just ask direct questions to the owners of the company. So I think it's safe to say that we'll be bringing a proposal at some point to the council on that kind of a program. So seeing no others, we will move on to old business, and we have resolutions in the second reading. And the first is Resolution 2019-2020-06, the McAllen Dam Engineering Services. Resolution, I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2020-6, McAllen Dam Engineering Services.
Second.
Oh, wait a second, sorry.
Good evening. This is to approve continuing on with our Geo-Technical Company, GZA, which did the original engineering, did our engineering design for the dam. The dam bureau requires us to have an engineer in charge, and since they're the design contractor, they're preferred engineer in charge, this is a contract to engage with them as the engineer in charge as well as oversight and helping us with this project as we go through. And so this request is for that contract.
Any questions? Yeah, okay. You can go ahead.
So the amount is 166K.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to know where that lined up or ended up lining up with our original funding that was approved by the town.
It is in, it is, was carried in our original funding, and it is, actually, we're hoping to actually draw up some of the cost of that in certain areas, but it is in the range that we had originally carried for these engineering services.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So the next is Resolution 2019-2020-07, the Ambulance Revolving Fund Increase, and I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2019-2020-07, Increase Ambulance Revolving Fund 14.
Second.
Mr. Malasky is here to...
The fund was established in 2008, and it named you guys as agents to oversee it and release the funds. There hasn't been an increase since it was created, and the cost has gone up every year. And in the future, we purchase the ambulances, ambulance equipment. In the past, that's all you could purchase with this funds. They did just change the law in 2018 so it could be for other equipment, not just medical. But that's where the funds come from, is from our revenues, the percentage. And we're just looking to cover our costs in the future with this recommended increase.
Councillor, that was old Councillor Cast, right? Okay, sorry. I just had a couple questions about how the fund works. So, or I guess how the, what our capacity is right now. So we have two ambulances.
Correct.
And we rotate them. So we obviously just approved a new ambulance at our last meeting.
Yeah.
And so when do you expect that the next request would come in? How, what's the timeframe?
We'll be looking at updating our stretchers. We have the power lift stretchers. They're around $30,000. So those are going to be due for replacement. I'm not sold yet on the lift system to put them in. It went from just having the stretcher to where it actually picks up the whole thing and puts it in the ambulance for you, and you don't have to hold it. We're very hilly here. It's great down to Hampton because everything's flat, but when you get on a hill... So it's something we're looking into, but that would be the next request from this fund, would be to update our stretchers.
And when do you think that the next ambulance would have to be replaced?
It'll be 2000, the other newer one is 2016, so we keep them for 10 years, so 2026. The life packs are about five years old. We usually keep them around seven. So in two years, we'd be looking to replace the life packs. They're 30,000 each. We have two of them.
And my other part of this question is the, the equipment that we have, besides the fact that we may need to replace it, do you feel like we have enough equipment to adequately serve the community? Or is it something that we would, you know, will we need to add a third ambulance? Will we need to add?
We're not to the point where we would need to add a third ambulance, but now that they've changed the law for what we can use these funds for, I could buy turnout gear with it. I could buy thermal imagers with it. Before, I couldn't do that. I could only buy stuff that went on the ambulance, but they tweaked the law in 2018. So I can, anything that has to do with the fire department, I could go into this fund to make purchases, which, it's through our revenues that we create and generate, so it could help offset putting stuff in the budget, you know?
Right.
But what I'm looking to do right now is still maintain the ambulances and so forth with this request.
Councillor Cast?
I just wanted to get your thinking on, you say that the costs are increasing 3% to 5% annually. So is, how long will this give you a buffer before you'd need to probably, you know, if that continues, you'd need to come back and increase it again, right?
Me and Steve actually put the increase in there, thinking it would get us by at least another six, seven years before we'd have to do an increase. We just made it almost 11 without, you know, we're at the point now when we just approved that ambulance a couple weeks ago. There's like $6,000 left in the fund.
Right.
So we were kind of behind it. We probably should have been here a couple of years ago asking to do this.
But it wasn't just, the costs are increasing, just to talk that through, not just because costs increased, but also because your calls are increasing too? Or was that the revenue?
No, the cost, what I'm saying is an ambulance, the cost for an ambulance every year, from one year to next, is a 3% to 5% increase. Those numbers are actually changing a little more now with all the tariffs and stuff because of the steel.
Right.
But it's, it's hard to, that's what I mean by the 3% to 5%, it's just the cost for the equipment. Typically, a piece of equipment goes up about 3% to 5%, depending on what it is, whether it's a life pack or an ambulance.
Does the increase in calls for service, that's affecting, increasing your revenue on the other side, but does that affect your cost too?
Nah, well, medical supplies, a little bit, but not, not, not really too bad.
Councillor Dumont, you're all set?
Actually, just canceled because he answered my question.
Seeing no other questions, call the roll, please.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution 2019-2020-08, forming an ad hoc arts and tourism commission. I would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2020-08, creating an ad hoc arts and tourism commission.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Councillor Cast?
Does anyone else have a question first?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the resolution seems to be weighted a little bit more on the arts side. So I just had some questions about the tourism.
You have the Councillor Finch request, is it?
Oh, okay, so...
Yeah, so I guess it was kind of born out of the interest in having an arts commission to look at... Yes, I guess it was kind of born out of the interest in having an arts commission to look at ways to drive tourism to town. A lot of communities have either an arts and tourism commission or an arts culture and tourism, but the idea is that the arts would be a feature that drives tourism, so I, I guess that's, the arts would be the lead in this, but the idea is finding other ways to bring it, because obviously we have businesses, restaurants, conservation lands, but the art would be the, the driver, I guess, for the tourism.
Good. Seeing no other questions, if you want to call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
I think it's a great idea.
Great.
So next we have, let's see, the, um, oh, there's, no nominations, so we have Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh nine, which, do you need me to read it, because we're gonna suspend the rules?
Read it first and then suspend the rules.
So approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, whereas the town administrator submitted his budget for the next fiscal year to the town council on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And whereas the town council, after reviewing the proposed budget and making various changes, desires to forward the municipal budget committee a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the annual budget for the town of Newmarket for fiscal year twenty twenty sub-
Twenty-one.
Yep. Submitted to the town council by the town administrator, is amended and recommends to the municipal budget committee for its review the following appropriations. To the general fund, eight million four hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Special funds, one million three hundred twenty-five thousand fifty dollars. And the enterprise water and sewer funds, three million four hundred seventeen thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars for a total of thirteen million two hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. First reading November sixth.
Madam Chair, I request that you suspend the rules to act on this this evening, so you'll meet the deadline of the November fifteenth and submit it to the municipal budget committee.
I would accept a motion to suspend the rules.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
If you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Quick overview?
Yeah, please.
As you're aware, we sat in workshop session two Saturdays ago and hashed out the budget. That does have a reduction of four hundred dollars from the proposed budget of the town administrator and the enterprise funds. So the, as was mentioned, the new budget is thirteen million two hundred twenty thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars for a pers, increase of nine point four-two percent over the previous fiscal year. That will, this is all estimates, because we do not have the final tax rate. Be an eighty-nine cent increase on the ta, on the town portion of the tax rate. It was expected due to the first-year bond payment for the McAllen Dam project, as well as an additional police officer and the increase in the finance director's staffing.
Any questions? I would just, one quick thing. With, I, I give, I guess, my approval, or, you know, with the understanding that there was one omission in the, the grants, that we would recommend that the budget, municipal budget committee reviews, is that the right?
You could amend the budget to include it.
It might be easier.
Yeah.
If we could do that.
Sure. It's for, women, or, Oyster.
Oyster River Women's Aid.
Women's Aid, thank you, for five thousand dollars. So you amend the budget by five thousand dollars, so the new figure. It'll be now thirteen million two hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. So you need two things. One, you need a motion to first approve the budget.
As amended?
As, nope, then you then amend the budget after.
Okay, so I'll, you want me to go ahead and do that? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the budget. For, do you want to read the whole?
No, that's fine.
All right.
Second.
If you could call the roll?
No.
No.
Now you need a motion. A motion to amend the budget by five thousand dollars for Oyster River.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the budget for five, to fi, for five thousand dollars for the Oyster River Women's Aid.
Second.
Seeing no one requesting to speak, you could call the roll, please.
This is on the amendment. Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel. Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. The new budget figure that you're adopting is thirteen million two hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. It's on the table, yeah. Here, no.
Right.
Yeah, no, no motions, yeah.
Seeing no comments, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
That was a complicated one.
It was.
All right, so we do have a couple more resolutions in the first reading. The first is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash ten, amending the town personnel policy, updating harassment policy. Whereas from time to time, the town reviews its personnel policy to ensure that it complies with the most recent laws and practices. And whereas the town of Newmarket wishes to amend its personnel policy to update it as it refers to harassment in the workplace. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that it hereby amends the personnel policy as outlined in the attached document. Let it further be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that this amendment shall take effect December first, twenty nineteen, first reading November sixth, twenty nineteen. And the next resolution is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash eleven, purchase of a twenty nineteen Ford F-five fifty four by four with plow and dump body. Whereas the Public Works Department needs to replace its two thousand and eight Ford F-four fifty plow truck. And whereas the department obtained quotes for a twenty nineteen Ford F-five fifty four by four with plow and dump body from McFarland Ford being the lowest proposal for sixty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. And whereas the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars as of October thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town administrator is authorized to purchase a twenty nineteen Ford F-five fifty four by four with plow and dump body from the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund and enter into any related contracts with McFarland Ford for a price not to exceed sixty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. First reading November sixth, twenty nineteen.
Madam Chair, I'm requesting that we suspend the rules this evening due to an emergency purchase, and it's supposed to snow on Friday. Not yet.
All right, so you want me to make a motion?
And your motion to suspend the rules.
All right, oh, okay, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Seeing no questions, call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now we need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash eleven, purchase of a twenty nineteen Ford F-five fifty four by four with plow and dump body.
Second.
Five fifty or four fifty?
Five fifty.
Five fifty, okay.
It was a four fifty.
Gotcha.
The Director of Public Works is here this evening to explain.
We would have kept the truck for one more year, twelve years, and it obviously didn't make it. But with the forecast and everything, that's why we're asking you to do what you're doing for us. And it's a frontline piece, it's a primary, has its own route, it's not something we really can live without, unfortunately. And the cost to repair the one we currently have is obviously a lot of money. So I, I contacted eight dealerships only, it's, because these two thousand twenties are out, there's only two out there that are left that meet our spec, which is like a stripped truck with really nothing in it. Everybody else just had the newer two thousand twenties, more money. So they were within six dollars, McFarland was the cheapest for the same exact truck. And we really need the vehicle like today, unfortunately.
Counsel Dumont.
Yeah, just one quick question. Obviously, snow's coming on Friday, what do you think the rollout time is to get this thing on the road and into, in, in the town?
We're hoping to go pick it up tomorrow, and they wouldn't put the plow on it until they knew I really had a check, so I couldn't write the check, so.
Yeah.
And with a storm being forecasted, everybody's getting slammed now, because everyone's panicking in the first snowstorm, so it's, do you believe in magic type of thing, is what I was told today, so hopefully we'll get it, but we're, yeah.
Thanks.
Just to, just to, sorry, I didn't have the button. Just to state, this is coming out of the Capital Reserve Fund, the money for it, right?
Yeah.
Right, and are we getting a storm on Friday?
Well, hopefully it's gonna stay north.
Can you tell us that for sure?
What I think we're gonna have to do is probably treat and not plow.
Right.
But next week is really gonna get active, it sounds like.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
And Thursday, Friday, or some, it's, we're gonna get into a pad and it's gonna hit us early and.
Right.
This all just kind of happened, so.
You know, we gamble often with our, you know, we, we do, we try and we stretch things and stretch things, and oftentimes it pays off and sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, we, like I say, we used to keep these trucks for ten years, and we pushed it out to twelve, and some, we usually make it, but this is an instance where it just, it didn't work out.
Counsel Sanders. Are they holding that truck for you? So if you get the check tomorrow, the truck will be waiting?
He promised me that he would do that.
Okay.
Knowing that I would find out, I have to text him soon as I walk out of here.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it might not be open now, but.
Seeing no other questions, if you want to call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate you guys suspending the rules, and it was a stressful day.
Good luck, good luck.
It gets better.
So any correspondence to the town council?
None.
I have one item, and I sort of mentioned it earlier, I'm trying to find it. I won't read it now, I'll, I'll forward it to everyone, but I just received it this afternoon. And so it was a notification from the state that, I'm trying to find it, sorry.
Do you have it?
Oh, you do.
I can read it real short. Please accept this as official notice of your appointment to serve on the committee established by Senate Bill two hundred and eighty-five, Chapter three eighteen, colon, four, established on coastal resilience and economic development program. In accordance with the legislation, your appointment is as follows. One representative for each local historic district in the municipalities that borders Great Bay or Atlantic Ocean appointed by that district. Please notify the Sac Clerk's office with a name, mailing address, phone number, and email address of your selected representative for contact reference. Designing is going to only be appointed by the committee if they specifically reference in the legislation.
So I just wanted to make people aware, I'll forward that letter, and so at our next meeting, I think we can, it's, if, if you're interested in serving on that committee, let me know, and I don't, I, I don't know what it would entail, you might, do you have any?
We have not, well, so the, the town, I'm serving as the New Hampshire Municipal Association's representative on the committee. So the Newha, Newmarket will actually have two seats. We haven't met, I have no idea. I haven't even gotten to notice that, who's the chair, so.
And that was the only item that I had. So, closing comments by town councillors. There are any closing comments? Counsel Finch.
Just a reminder, if you get a chance to head over to Stone Church to check out the photo exhibit for the Conservation Commission. And the other item I had was just a, I guess, an announcement that planning is about to begin for our third conversation with the council, which is tentative for January, with more specific information forthcoming.
Thank you. Counsel Kuiper.
I just want to say congratulations to the Newmarket High School, both boys and girls soccer teams made it to the finals this year. The girls are playing on Thursday, the boys are playing on Saturday, and just want to say congratulations to all of them.
It's awesome. And seeing no other items, I don't have anything else, then I would consider us adjourned.